Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to December. Today is December 2, 2019, and you are part of the Rowan County Commission Meeting here today. We are very pleased that you've chosen to join us. We hope that you enjoy your time with us here this afternoon because we're going to enjoy your time with us this afternoon. So it's been the tradition of this board and boards all across the United States for a long time that we do a couple of things. We're going to have, first of all, what's called a solemnizing prayer. These prayers are not for you, they're for us. As commissioners, we really do take very seriously what we do, and so we seek wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of you, the residents of Rowan County. We want to make good decisions. Following that, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank for this day, thank for the past Thanksgiving season. Your blessings upon us, blessings upon this meeting today, Lord, to other county commissioners, Lord, and the work they've done for this meeting today, Lord, and the work they always do, dear Lord. Thank for their dedication and the love that they have for this county, Lord. Pray you give them the wisdom they need, Lord Jesus. Pray you could help us today in all we say and do today. Give them the knowledge again as we start this meeting today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, and happy Thanksgiving to you. J.D., are you up?
I will be.
Yes, you are.
We're at that point every year where we undertake to elect officers for the upcoming year, and so I will open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Commissioners for Rowan County.
I move that Greg Edsby entered as candidate for chairman.
Second. Any further nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
All right, I've got a motion to close the nominations there. Second.
Second.
All in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Eds, you'll serve another term as chairman by acclamation. I'll now open the floor for nominations for Vice Chairman of the Rowan County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Jim Green.
Second.
No further. I'll accept the motion to close the nominations.
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Vice Chairman Green, you'll serve another term by acclamation. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. You'll be pleased to know I don't have a speech made. I expected that would get some applause. I do want to say one thing before we move ahead. This is a really good board, and we work very well together. We, at times, have conflict, and I am a huge fan of conflict because I think it's good for everybody. And so we try to represent you as the citizens well, and I'm just really proud of every single commissioner and appreciate very much what they bring to the board, and thank you for your vote of confidence in myself and Jim. So we'll move on. So thank you very much. I've got a couple of additions to the agenda. Let's see. The first item will be, we're going to add Item 6A, an item that was brought to us by the manager for a grant administrator. I believe that was provided for you. And then Item 6B, discussion regarding Woodleaf Park. That'll be 6B. That's something that Vice Chairman Green brings. So are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, do you have copies of that with you?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought. An extra.
Yep.
All right, very good. There we go. All right, if there are no other additions or deletions, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have the minutes been provided of November 18. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, Items A through I been provided. You've had opportunity to study those. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we'll move on to public comment. No public comment, all right. Then we'll move full steam ahead into public hearing for STA 02-19, subdivision street standards. Welcome, Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So if you recall back, well, tomorrow will be six months to the day that Board of Commissioners heard a request from the Fire Division Chief that requested the board consider the incorporation of Appendix D of the fire code into the subdivision ordinance, and specifically that refers to street width and turnaround standards. Since that time, Committee A of the Planning Board had met and considered some text and directed staff to prepare a draft ordinance change to the Planning Board for consideration, and that's what will be before you this afternoon. Take a step back. The board probably is aware that in our Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances, the fire code was adopted, and it specifically references a series of appendix B through H, which obviously includes D in that grouping there, but at the bottom, outlined in red, or underlined in red here, the reference says if the appendices conflict with local adopted ordinances, that local ordinance does apply. Not expecting anybody to be able to read the bottom here, but this is a reference to Appendix D, which you have the full version, three pages in your attachments for reference, but we, that is what was adopted by reference, but again, until the subdivision ordinance is changed, then this additional standards for width and turnaround radius does not apply. Moving right into the meat of the changes here, the first slide is pretty basic, but we did need a definition, or revise a definition, I should say, of a cul-de-sac, making reference that it is a dead-end street that happens to have a turnaround, and we robbed this definition from the zoning ordinance. And on the bottom here, and this is also on Page 2 and 3, the staff report, little bit of a holdover change from a couple of years ago with the road disclosure statements. Has nothing to do with Appendix D, but we wanted to go ahead and make that change here and defer back to that statement of 2259. Moving into the changes here for the Appendix D. So a few things to point out in this language. We default to the DOT minimum design standards for roads. We'll talk a little bit more about what those are later, but the ordinance is predicated on our local DOT review and road plans for construction and compliance when they're completed, that future residents will have a road that can be taken over by the state. So we'll get into what may exceed those standards here momentarily. There's a reference in here that an alternative design may be also adopted by the fire marshal as part of a package for submittal. We can't anticipate every scenario, so we wanted to include that, that although this is the boilerplate standards here, that some other standard could be accepted. So in A, the minimum standard at this point would be, if adopted, all roads 20 feet wide, pavement width of 20 feet. DOT minimum is 18 in some scenarios. Again, we'll look at those later, and a 70-foot diameter cul-de-sac, also a DOT minimum. Some of these, we have to lay the ground rules for considering DOT and the fire marshal's Appendix D incorporation. I will say, as part of that committee meeting, part of the committee's charge was also to determine how much of the Appendix D to incorporate in the ordinance. There's quite a bit that's not included, and it was agreed with staff, the committee, and the Fire Division that we would focus almost exclusively on the width and the turnaround and the cul-de-sac radius. One thing I do want to point out that should not be adopted here, needs to be removed, is this reference to 750. There was four different ranges in Appendix D, and there's a 750-plus, and we don't have that as part of this, so therefore the 501-foot-plus, it should just be open-ended here after the dash, so this 750 would be removed. I have some examples, so this will bring to better light when we look at those, but the dead-end streets up to 150 feet in length is the 20 and the 70, we talked about above. Exceeding 151 feet, the width would stay at 20, but the cul-de-sac diameter would increase to 96 feet. Beyond 500, from 501-plus, and this is again talking about a dead-end segment, which we'll look at again shortly, would be 26 feet in width, pavement width of the road, and the diameter would remain 96. Here's a few examples. Top left is a typical 20-foot width with a 70 bulb. These are not to scale, so don't look too closely at them, you'll see some issues there, but this would be the 26-foot street with a 96 bulb. These are pavement widths and not right-of-way. And then the hammerhead design is needed to determine at what point a dead-end street segment is measured. These are not acceptable dead-end turnarounds for DOT. A cul-de-sac bulb will still be the only offering there DOT will accept, and we'll talk a little bit about this here as well, the clearance round of hydrant. So the reference here, too, I talked about the, DOT probably would not include that hammerhead, but they couldn't just say flat-out no. So is it included here that most likely that's not going to be accepted? Additional right-of-way may be warranted when you increase that width from 20 to 26. We didn't include a reference to a 60-foot right-of-way in case something less were accepted, but just that would be part of this process, same as your cul-de-sac bulb. On a 70-foot diameter, it's going to be 100-foot right-of-way, most likely be 120 or more that's needed there. In the street widths, where you have a hydrant adjacent to the road, there is a clearance reference there to the 26-foot for a full 40 in that diagram on the previous page. C is included if a developer did not, or based on their circumstance in the subdivision layout with the roads, if they chose to request this board consider a waiver. That language in C would allow the board to consider an alternative design that didn't meet the ordinance or the fire marshal's alternative design. That's an option the board, you can keep or just remove and say it has to meet the ordinance or the fire marshal's design. This is not a variance, it would only be a waiver. Lastly, Appendix D has a specific reference to the weight load of the vehicles. Instead of keeping a generic reference, we took that from Appendix D and incorporated it in here as well.
Can I ask a question and go back to your? If DOT will not accept a hammerhead road, why is this even part of this?
You'll see that shortly, but we're also including it because there's a few examples where they have, but it's pretty rare.
Can I, what is the standard weight that the road, that are required on roads at this point in time?
This reference here is specifically for fire apparatus access road that may not really be a paved road, it could be a gravel road that provides access to a hydrant, but I don't know DOT's standard for that. If that, this has nothing to do specifically with this language above. We already have this in our water point standards. It looks like it's all part of the same, but if you look in your handout here, that's coming from the all-weather access road standard in G. I slid that on this slide. It looks like it's part of this section, but it's not.
So that, so that's access for, at the water points. Okay, most of the water points that I see in the county are not paved.
Correct. This can be gravel.
Okay.
If you look at Page 6, that hopefully will answer that question. This is a totally different section that just applies to water point access roads and not subdivision streets.
Could you go back one slide, please? So, let her see, the subdivisions may request. If this is a new ordinance, and this is only going forward, why would we have a waiver in there?
I would say it's at the board's discretion if you want to adopt this waiver. You don't have to, but being this is a pretty significant change to our ordinance, and it's almost impossible to predetermine every scenario, incorporating language, this felt like an out that we might could consider, but by all means, if the board does not want to include that and only defer to the fire marshal's alternative, when we look at some examples here, I think maybe we can talk about what could be a alternative in that arrangement of roads. But again, if the board chooses to just defer to the fire marshal's opinion, then this could be removed.
Was there any consideration at all for having the width wide enough so walkers and people who are riding bicycles, you know, aren't going to get hit if there's two cars passing each other?
No. So here is an excerpt of, on the top, residential local road. The main thing is really to look at here, not focus on all the detail, but right-of-way minimum is 45, pavement width is 18. This could be a dead-end street segment. And then on a residential collector road is, you may come off of the main road and all the different turns off of the main road into a development will have a collector status. So once you commit to a turn and it's a dead end, then it would default to a local road. Right-of-way is 50 feet, pavement is 20. These are DOT minimums. So let's take a look at a couple of examples here. In the hidden hut subdivision, if this came in today, and this was undeveloped, and we applied these new standards, in the top left, I've got color-coded, it in black is 0 to 150, but just as well could be that collector status road where you come off Highway 150, and this road, to that point, well, at the first intersection, at this location here, if you turn right on Old Farm, there's no way to get back out to 150 or another road in the development. It's a dead-end cul-de-sac street. If you turn left, you continue on, and there's another intersection and through movement, but at each of these intersections here, you might have to recalculate your standard. At that point, when you determine the length, you go to the chart, and it will determine your width and your turnaround radius. So the ones in red are all 501 or more, and they would be 26 feet wide with a 96 bulb. The blue would be 20 and 96, and then the black would remain 20. Taking a look at Berkshire, which is a lot larger, you can see the relative amount of area, or the segment, I should say, that's still black, because at each one of these locations, you still have the ability, and that's where you go back in the hammerhead design, you can make a movement in this street network, and you're, at the point, for example, on Berkshire Lane here, that is a dead-end road, and there's no way to turn around, and the length is over 501 feet. But at this location here, you can still go to another intersection, that's why the pavement width is still 20. So hopefully this provides a little bit of context to how those numbers would reflect in a development and what would have to be upgraded. So what was actually built there, and part of this I'm going to assume, because most of the time, the minimum is built, but every once in a while, it will be, instead of 18, they will go ahead and do 20 feet. So...
Can you explain to us why the length of these roads makes a difference? If I'm in a fire truck going down a red, black, or blue road, why do we, why is there a difference required in the width of the cul-de-sac if you're driving the same truck down one of these roads?
I'm going to defer to the fire marshal, but the turning radius, the length, if you're only going 150 feet, I guess that's determined that it's not that long of a drive before you find out you can't turn around or have to make a three-point turn. But I would refer to her on the meat of that.
On this particular map, are these, do these roads not exit into 801 out there?
This is the only entrance to 801. So what would be 18 currently? Reed's Borough, this part of Amesbury, this section here, anything that's not black would be 18 feet, 45-foot right-of-way, minimum. It may be 20 and 50, but that was a upgraded build if the developer chose to do so. So staff contacted a few of our neighbors and some others on the list served that chose to respond to, who else is doing this? Cabarrus County does have a standard that when you have more than 30 lots, then they have something very similar to Appendix D. Seems like instead of 96, it's 90 or some measure between 70 and 96, and I believe they've got a lot more options, but it appears to be very similar to Appendix D. You see some comments over here, a lot of the counties considered it but elected not to adopt. Lincoln County adopted a standard that required more than one access point when you had a sliding scale of number of lots. And you see at the bottom DOT's opinion on the standard, but they're not going to be necessarily opposed to it outside the context, you know, if we adopt this, they've indicated that they will continue to review our road plans and work with a developer that is subject to this standard. So Committee A did vote in favor of, again, directing staff to prepare text. There was one committee member that had some reluctance thereafter, hence reflected in the 6-1 vote at the Planning Board. So all this needs, besides a public hearing, is a vote to approve in our table.
I'm confused, Sean. If the state DOT doesn't want us to widen the roads, and that's based on maintenance, am I correct? So I guess, once again, you know, there are no sidewalks out here, and 18 feet is not I lived on a 16-foot road, and you had to practically drive in the ditch when you were passing another car.
All right, any questions for Shane?
Let me ask you this, I probably shouldn't know this, but we get a lot of, well, I've gotten a lot of calls over the years from citizens that live in developments where the roads were never taken over by DOT. Do we still have, can that still happen now? Would you still allow developments built not to DOT standards?
More often than not, the problem, well, since 94, any road, with very few exceptions, would have been built to DOT standards. The problem occurs is, over time, folks may not abide by the standards of, within this right-of-way, you've got to install this type of pipe, or you're not supposed to fill in the ditch, or you don't want to mow the ditch, so it, there's a myriad of different issues, pavement width failures prior to the number of homes put in the development. Usually that's the problem. There's been quite a few tools removed from our ability to kind of be in continuous involvement to make sure these remain eligible in terms of their standards, there's no performance or ongoing maintenance guarantee. So our hands are kind of tied, and usually that's more the issue that occurs.
Could you explain that? What do you mean, no maintenance guarantee?
There was, years ago, not that many years ago, but you could, as an option, you could say, well, part of the overall development, the county needs to hang on to 25% of the cost of these roads to make sure that they will continue to remain in a condition and not fall in disrepair. So the residents, as they move in, can, you know, there's still a relationship between the county and the developer with that money to take care of these roads so they don't have that issue. Still some drawback because it may not be enough at a certain point in time, but there's not a lot of options we have now. Once that plat is filed, we're out of it.
Anything else for Shane?
And currently, isn't it any 10 subdivided lots then becomes under your jurisdiction, or is it lower than that nowadays?
Any new right-of-way platted is considered a major subdivision. You plat a lot, most of the time, you're going to build more than one lot, but, I mean, by definition, a major is also eight or more lots, but it's usually based on a new road created. The smallest I can recall is about six lots.
All right, anything else? Okay. Marshall, would you like to come up and address?
Chairman Commissioners, thank you for having us. This is Lieutenant Darrell Nichols. That works for me as well, and I'm here to, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Anything you'd like to add to what Shane brought to us?
Yes, I would like to, we won't go through the whole slide. Yes, I would like to, we won't go through the whole slide, but there were a few things that we wanted you to see, that we see out in the county.
Not that one.
This was actually developed, this is not just coming from the fire side of it. As you see, this code Appendix D was developed over the years by architects, fire chiefs, home builders, and state fire marshals. So this is not just coming from us. This is an example that we didn't have last time. This was lock working in a neighborhood, and Lieutenant Nichols actually worked this fire, and he can explain how the road width did cause some problems. But as you see, that's one truck, and you can see the problems with the width. There's nothing on each side of it. There was no way for another truck to pass them.
How wide was that, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, what?
How wide is this road?
I'm not, do you remember, do you know, Lieutenant, how-
It looks like a 16 footer.
Well, my, I personally live on a road like this, and my road is nine and a half foot.
Nine and a half?
Yes, ma'am, and it was a family farm that was cut up years ago. And so I live on nine and a half, and my three-quarter ton pickup truck takes up the whole road. So this may be just a little bit wider than that. But I could get you those specifics, just not right now. Do you want to explain how the road width?
Yes. First fire truck on the scene, I'm sorry, first fire truck on the scene, obviously couldn't see what they had till they got there because of the trees. So they weren't able to lay a five-inch supply of water in. Now, keep in mind, this is a non-hydrant, the hydrants are very sparse out in this area. So with the road being this narrow, it went back and looked, and it delayed a sustainable water supply for 12 minutes. So there was a 12-minute delay because they couldn't take a tanker and drive straight up in, set a drop tank up, and start having sufficient water. They actually had to reassess the situation, back up and physically by personnel and hand-lay five-inch supply about 500 feet back down to the intersection. At that, you know, fire doubles about every minute, so in 12 minutes' time, yes. That's the nearest example that we have as far as timeline of these narrow streets hampering our operations. Not only are they faced with trying to mitigate the house on fire and save life and property, but then they also got to figure out how to get the apparatus in to be able to sustain the water. So, you know, this, this is nothing new. Like Chief Horn said, this ordinance was developed through the International Fire Code. Things are not developed in that fire code unless they've been an issue. And we're no different here in Rowan County than anywhere else in the country. And with our growth that is coming, we're at the request of our firefighters and fire chiefs in the county. They've asked us to, you know, help mitigate this issue and take this burden off of them. I think you had a question on the 150-street length. We can, firefighters can manipulate hoses that far easily and effectively. When you get beyond that, it's just not effective to physically by hand move hose that far over that. Most of the pre-connects on the truck are like 200 feet long. Okay, so we operate in usually around a 200-feet distance. That hoses can be manipulated by hand easily and effectively. You start getting beyond that, and it starts causing a lot of additional issues. Does that make sense?
No.
Are you saying you're not going to take a truck down a street that's-
I'm sorry?
You're saying that you're not going to take a truck down the street if you can go 150 feet, is that what?
If they can't see for their conditions when they turn in, if it's only 150 feet long, all right, and let's say the house is at the end, about 150, and they get all the way to it, get off, get to the front door, boom, there's smoke to the ceiling, you know, it's not showing itself outside. All right? Because they're not going to establish that water supply and block a road. The five-inch big yellow hose that they use, when it's full of water, it weighs 100 pounds per foot, I mean, per 10-foot. So, you know, once it's there, it's not moved easily. So they're not going to lay it down unless they know they need it. So if they get in 150 feet, discover they do have working fire conditions where they need a water supply. I've, actually, in my younger days, I can pull 150 feet of five-inch by myself back to that intersection. And that's where you would set up, if it's in a rural water supply, you would set up the drop tank and another engine, called a water point engine or water source engine, to supply the working truck at the fire. If it gets beyond that, you need to lay it with the truck as you go in. Or another tactic that's used is called reversing out, where you'd have a second engine come in, hook to that first one, or drop the hose at the first one, and lay back out. So you need to have streets wide enough that these fire trucks can get in and manipulate. And in the rural water supply, the reason that the cul-de-sacs have gone to that dimensions is most of the fire trucks now, especially tankers which haul our water, have a turning radius of around 40, I think we have that down. We measured some here, we have in accounting. Boston Heights has a curb-to-curb means to the front bumper. If there was a wall up, that's what it would take to turn around inside of that, is 80 feet. And that's around the average, 80 to 83 feet of our trucks today. So everybody's been on 85. You've seen where traffic just sort of slows up for no particular reason, you don't see anything, and that hesitation just grows and gets longer. Well, if you have a cul-de-sac where a fire truck has to do a three-point turn and back up, it causes a hesitation in that flow, okay? And it'd take, don't take but one truck to cause a hiccup. And then over the course of time of hauling that water, that gap will grow. And then you'll get a bottleneck, and then it's when you run, it's when we run out of water. So we need cul-de-sacs big enough for those trucks to go in and make a seamless turn, and then streets wide enough that they can pass each other without knocking the mirrors off or running over edges of driveways. Lock has had to go out and fix numerous driveways where they've had to run over the edges of them and bust them. You know, it's just things like that. These, I know Shane mentioned these other counties, I mean, when they start getting the growth that we have and is coming, I mean, they'll be addressing it too. Because the industry standard for the trucks is pretty much nationwide. They're not getting any smaller.
Well, back to the, so what, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to do this, why don't we just make all of the cul-de-sacs the larger? Why is the point of it?
Try and save, if they're not actually needed, if you've got a different way you can manipulate the hose and on the truck, like it was Shane talked about in the distance, just to save cost.
We were trying to be developer-friendly as well as fire department-friendly and fire truck-friendly.
But once, I mean, if, in haste or whatever they go down there, they're still going to have to turn around in a 70-foot-
Yeah.
-cul-de-sac.
Now, is the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is the state going to maintain whatever we approve, or are they still going to just maintain what their standards are on these roads?
You can.
What we have been told, and we were not able to get it in writing, we worked with several DOT engineers, but of course, we weren't able to get it in writing. They told us if it was there, they would maintain it. I don't think they wanted to put that in writing, but they're not going to maintain and then leave two or three feet on each side that's not maintained. So we were told in different meetings that that's what would happen, but we were not able to get that in writing.
Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the process is, is once the streets are installed, they still have to petition for DOT to accept the streets in their system. And so if they accept, they either accept the streets or they don't. And so I think, you know, the question's answered is, DOT still has to accept the streets regardless of what width, as long as the streets meet their minimum standards. But is that correct, Shane?
I don't think that acceptance will be an issue, but there's under no circumstance would I guarantee that that won't happen, there won't be a problem. But from talking with them, I believe in their reluctance, they indicated they would not, you know, look at this as an issue. It's, you know, Rowan County locally decided to adopt this. I think other counties have done this as well, that were not included. I think Alamance County and maybe one other. So I'm not aware of an issue we're going right into.
Not accept them.
Exactly. And maintenance would be what I would be concerned about for the homeowners, is not just accepting it, but accepting it and maintaining it as we give it to them, as the owners of the development turn it over to the state.
Now, they're one in the same. Once they accept it, it's maintained. I don't think there's a way they can back out, but at least I haven't heard of one.
I'd like to go back to the length of fire trucks. If I heard correctly, you said that they're only going to get bigger?
It's historically, they have just gotten bigger.
Okay, so that would make, yeah, that would make another case for the larger cul-de-sac, wouldn't it?
Well, yes, and not only on just fire calls. As you wear, you know, a fire truck goes to 90% of all medical calls in our county with our first responder program. So, and the guys that are in on the station, they're taking a fire engine. Because if, when they clear that, if a house fire comes in, they don't have time to go back to the station and get a truck. That's unacceptable. So there's been times that a fire truck has had to back out just so the ambulance could get out. And, you know, we can't even get an ambulance past a fire truck. Ambulances aren't getting any, any smaller either. So it's, we wouldn't be here bringing, addressing this with you if it hadn't been an issue.
And also, Commissioners, another thing, it's not just for our emergency vehicles. Whenever we have disasters, hurricanes, tornado, whatever, and we have large utility trucks that come in, this would be for them as well. Anytime that we've had hurricanes, and I know several Commissioners and the County Manager has been with us during those times, you see power trucks, you see all types of utility vehicles, and this would be for them. It's really for any emergency vehicle. And I would like to wrap it up with just saying that this is personally our own property on this road. And if you don't mind, will you allow me to walk to the screen and show you?
Earlier this year, we had a structure fire here. Okay, this is farming line off on the quarry that comes off of 153. The road width is nine and a half feet. Just my vehicle, you know, you can't get anything, it always moves and passes. Well, right here, in this curve, luckily, I've got an area here that the fire trucks can park in, but trying to get back here, they cannot make that turn. So what I saw was 60,000-pound vehicles going through my neighbor's yard, busting water pipes, taking a septic tank lid off, because they had to get there. There was no way for them to make that turn because once somebody parked here, again, it bottled down. And a road like this, when it deadens, it flat deadends. There is no turning, it's, you're just done. So that was one that just happened within the last year. And when we arrived, fire trucks had bottled up so bad, we were headed toward 153 and had to walk in with fire equipment. Like I said, it's, the main concern here was the fire department was able to get there. It wasn't their home, it was their shop, but they were able to get there. It was totally destroyed, and whether it had 26-foot wide roads, I can't promise that it wouldn't have been destroyed. But what I can say is, this man here, the fire department, would have had to repair all this pipe. And there's not a fire department in this county that hasn't had to repair a septic tank lid, or mailboxes, or yards, receding lawns, plus damage to those very expensive fire trucks. We've had a lot of damage to trucks over the years with them trying to maneuver, mirrors getting slapped, bumpers getting taken off, things like that. And we hate to continue with worst-case scenarios, but that's what we're working in, in worst-case scenarios. So if this was your home, you know, you would want to make sure that people like living out here because it's quiet, but you want to make sure that somebody can hit you, wouldn't they? We are a long-range community road, so we keep it ourselves. And the last thing that I want to mention is, and I know you've got more to do today, so the last thing I want to mention is, I think that all of you know, my staff and I, we don't come here and just bring up small things all the time. You know, if we bring it up, it's because it has been a problem, we've seen it as we're seeing more development come in. And we take our job working for the citizens very seriously, and we believe that we need to come up with their safety before they even realize that there's an issue. And the county charges us with that, and the citizens expect that out of us. So we want to bring this to your attention. It's already in the code that I can personally say, your road needs to be whatever foot I want to do it. Well, I don't think that's fair, because I may not be in this position tomorrow, we don't ever know what's going to happen. So Chapter 5 of the code, which is already in effect, says that it's up to me how big these turnarounds are, how wide these roads are, how wide, but I didn't like that. I wanted to make it uniform so that whoever walked in the office, they're going to get the same information as before. So that was one way to make it uniform, instead of it just saying that I'm the authority having jurisdiction telling you how wide your road has to be, or how wide your cul-de-sac has to be. So we would like for that to be uniform. And I know as well, working with you over the years, that you're also concerned with safety and the safety of our citizens, and I would just like to see our county move forward into this.
How did you end up with a nine-and-a-half-foot road?
That was built in 1970, when the quarry farm, when our family farm was cut up, and it was dirt, and it was all family that lived on there. Well, then, family dies out, more people come in, more people build the house. It finally was paved, the family, we all paved it, and nobody thought, you know, I didn't live on the road at the time, but nobody thought, they just said, well, we just need a road. So there, you've got a nine-and-a-half-foot road. Two weeks ago, we were on an incident, I won't mention the road name, but it's also on the southern end of the county, it's not DOT-maintained, and I was at the very end of the road. It's a mile-long road, I was down at the very end, and in my three-quarter-ton short-bed pickup truck, I had to make seven turns just to get out from the back of that, on the road, but just to be able to get back. There's no way a fire truck would do that, and there's no way two were going to fit in there, because I believe that road is 12-foot wide.
Dar, but let me ask you, if I'm not mistaken, we've been talking about this for about two years now.
Two years, yes, sir.
And, you know, we asked you to come up with a plan, and I think that's what you've done, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I want to say this, I'm not an expert in anything that deals with fire departments or fire trucks or emergency vehicles, so I leave it up to the experts to tell me what they need, and I appreciate you bringing this to us and explaining to us why we need to do this.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate my staff as well, because they've put in just as much or more work on this than I have, and the fire chiefs.
What are all these other communities missing? I mean, that's the last sheet that we have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address that, if you'd like to hear it. Davie and Davidson County have county water, so they don't have the tankers that, because their water's there on site. So that's the reason that they're not having these issues.
Salisbury has adopted it.
In Salisbury, the city of Salisbury has adopted it, and I've had three municipalities come to me to come to their board because they want to adopt it as well as they see other communities coming in.
I just wanted to steal the microphone for a couple of seconds and try to add a little bit of context. I think that a lot of communities are moving towards that, we can see that with Salisbury and these other communities that have established water, and they're trying to make moves to provide a safety outlet for their citizens. So I guess I would add that, that some of those other areas are on the way to adopting such things, or to making their own versions in that spirit. And I guess, as far as, I'd like to add just something on what Lieutenant Nichols was talking about with the 12-minute response time. Just put it in context, legacy materials that we furnish our homes with, cotton, solid wood, everything like that, older- that, older construction materials, they can, to a significant burn time, a significant fire, what we call flashover-type event, where everything combusts at once, that would take about 30 minutes, in those legacy materials. What we build our houses out of these days, and what we furnish our houses with these days, it takes three and a half minutes for a single room to flash over. So, if you have a 12-minute delay in getting water to a fire, that equals a disaster for that family. Disasters happen about 500 times in 2018. We're just talking about fire responses to subdivisions. That's how often it's happened. So, that's a significant thing. And with, what we're trying to do is adopt something into ordinance that's already been validated by third parties, that's already been adopted to our own fire code, and that will increase safety for our firefighting personnel, EMS, police, utilities, for all those folks, provide a safety element for our residents. And I think as an added benefit, Commissioner Kluzman, you asked about the widening for residents, pedestrians, everything. We didn't consider that, but that is an added benefit to doing this. So, that's the context that I would add for you.
And just to expand on what Chief Solis said, there were 504 fire calls, not just medical, fire calls in subdivisions in Rowan County in the last year. So, this does happen a lot. And that was just in the county, not including the city. And the fire that we're talking about, where we showed you the picture, that fire started in a mattress, and by the time water was able to get to it, fire was blowing out the second-story windows. So, that's when you have such a delay. And again, I'm not saying we're gonna fix the world by making these roads wider, but I do think that we'll have safety. Thankfully, that was in the middle of the day, not at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning.
Let me ask my fellow commissioners some questions here. Maybe Craig, since you've built houses, what, I mean, what would the... I mean, how much difference cost-wise would it be for a developer to have to do the 96 turn instead of 70?
Well, I don't think it's so much the cost of the asphalt, it's how much property it takes away.
Right.
When you have that larger radius. But if I remember when Deborah and I were discussing with the plan, it's on 801 right now, that was one of the concerns, was it had already been plotted, and if they had to comply with these new requirements, it was gonna take away five or six lots on each cul-de-sac. So, it's a money situation with the developer. But at the same time, if they had been in place, then when they surveyed it, it would have been in compliance, then it would have been made that way. So, I mean, the asphalt's the cheap part. It's the grading, it's the surveying, and those kind of things that have to go on when you're laying the development out, that runs the cost up for the developer. And of course, the more land you take away, the less land he's got to sell. So, that's kind of why they have a pushback on it.
Well, now, I'm talking about here, it says from 0 to 150 and 151 to 500, it's still gonna be 20-foot-wide roads, but the cul-de-sac is differences between 70 and 96. So, I mean, how much, so it's really just the cul-de-sac section that's gonna be wider, right?
Correct.
So, is that an extra lot they're gonna lose overall? I mean...
Well, it's not one lot, it's the fact you're taking away frontage all the way around that circle. So, it decreases the size of the lot, you know, from maybe three-quarter acres to down to a half of an acre, once you take that out. Because then you gotta ride away from that point, too.
Right.
So, you know, it's all about the dollars and cents, but at the same time, it's about the safety of our residents, too. You know, I'm more concerned about them having what they need to take care of my citizens than the developer having an extra couple thousand dollars in his pocket.
Well, now, my question is, why don't we do 96 for everything if we're gonna... Because the trucks are gonna get bigger, so while we're, if we're actually gonna do this, then why are we doing 70 and the 96? Is my question.
Are you preaching to the choir?
Well, now, that's why I'm asking you, because they said they were trying to help the developers save some money.
Well, what they're saying is that, you know, some developments are not gonna be that big. So, when you take away that frontage, you take away a good part of the land that they're trying to sell. That's what I think comes into play. The one that's at Berkshire is a huge development. Most of them in the county are not that size. I can name several that aren't but 25-acre lots. So, I think that's part of what they're talking about. But I agree, I think they all ought to be uniform, they all ought to be the same.
Another question I had from my insurance friends here.
There you go.
Does the, so if, does the insurance not pay for damages that the fire causes, other people's properties, by the fire trucks running over the septic tanks? Is that just not a normal thing? Is that a state law, or is that just something insurance companies don't normally do?
Well, if it's, if anything is accidental, it's covered. If it is intentional, which in the cases that she's talked about, they intentionally went across the yard, knowing that they would probably cause damage to the yard, to the pipes and things. And so, I think that's the biggest difference between the two. I will defer to my expert friend here, if he has a different take on that.
I don't know. I just think the fire department's offered to fix them. I don't think they ever...
I've never heard of anybody being involved in a lawsuit with that.
And when the fire department would get a complaint, or they knew that they had done something afterwards, it's been my experience, they always went back to the property owners and offered to fix it, because they did not want that property owner to be hurt because of another property owner.
Well, but, yeah, but if the fire, if you're showing somebody's house because their house on fire, then the other person, I think, yeah, that...
That person should be responsible.
Those things are covered, yes, as part of your fire claim.
But the neighbors, I'd, and I've been in it 25 years, I've never had anyone call and say, "Hey, my neighbor's house burned, and the fire department tore up my yard. Are y'all gonna pay for it?" Have you ever had that?
Most fire departments do keep grass seed on-site, just so if it happens, they can go out and do it themselves on a Saturday morning and be done with it. Busted pipes, a little bit different, they have to hire somebody, but, yes.
Well, I guess my question is, the fire department, should they be doing that? Or in the past, they did it, and they said, "No, it doesn't count," or they just never done it? Should they be going to the insurance and say, "You know, we had to knock over a mailbox to get in here"?
They may, should, but they just historically have done it themselves.
It's, there's a vast amount of fires that we run, that there's no insurance involved at all.
That's true.
Since I've actually been on this investigation side of this business, it's actually shocking to know how many people are uninsured. I would say, just in the calls I have ran in the last two years, majority that I've investigated, there's not been any insurance.
So, I'm still hung up on this sheet, and trying to understand, is this just too controversial of a subject, and so commissioners just didn't want to deal with it? Or is there another reason?
I can only speak for the two other counties that I have served in, and it was a developer issue. It boiled down to money, was my experience.
Meaning what?
That the developers did not want it, which we have developers that don't want this, and I understand that. But it had been my experience that the developers were able to sway the votes, not in this county, but in other counties where I've served.
Well, I've not talked to any, so, but I understand this is a big change and a big undertaking.
And I would rather it be uniform, like I said, than me go back to Chapter 5 and say, "No, it's gotta be 30 feet, it's gotta be 25." I just think that whoever walks in the door, it should be the same across the board, whether I'm here, you know, someone else has my position, whatever, that it's the same across the board.
Well, Davidson County says it was a controversial topic. They considered it, but they declined to adopt. The Fire Marshal works with a developer to encourage wider streets at the TRC level.
When I put this out to the state chairman, I got many results back that said, "You're gonna have a hard time with this. Good luck." Because it's not, you know, and that was across the state. And it was because of developers. But we decided to push ahead with it anyway. But we had gotten that from across the state, that it would be uphill to get this passed. So, we understood that going into it.
Shane, anything else from you? Did you, who put this chart together?
I did.
Can you shed any light for us?
Some were concerned about the feedback from developers. One was concerned that the DOT didn't, wasn't in favor of it, and they, there was some strong hesitation with, again, that being an incident you have to work with for plan review and whatnot. Don't know about any other baggage associated with that relationship, don't recall any. But for the most part, it was, it was pretty controversial in a couple of areas. So, most of the time, once they got into it, they backed right out. But other than those examples, I don't really have another one.
Hey, can you bring that map back up for the, it was on 801? So, there's only one access from 801 to this entire development?
Yes, sir.
Because I was looking here, what Lincoln County, apparently, they have 30 lots or more, you gotta have two entrances. Which, in my opinion, either for fire service, or even for law enforcement, if you have your incidents up here at the front, everybody in the entire development's stuck back here. So, I don't know why that's not something we would look at for this. Is it, we already have that?
Yes, sir. The...
Yes, sir. When it is necessary, I can ask for two roads to be put in. The latest, the Yorkshire Farms, I'd allowed them to manipulate theirs just a little bit. They needed two entrances, because they were going in phases. So, what I allowed them to do, where the code says that the second road should be, didn't make any sense, because it was putting you out right into a curve on Mooresville Road. So, I did allow that one to come a little bit closer, but they, but that one does have two entrances. Whenever we see one this large in the future, you should be, you should see two entrances.
So, what's the standard?
The standard is, if I can see that, like in the fire code, and I can bring it up, wherever I think that we need two entrances, which now, it depends on how the road is laid out, whether I want two entrances or not. And if one entrance will cause a backup in traffic, I can also require two entrances.
Okay. So, that's, but that's, to what you were talking about earlier, so that's really your judgment, whether it's you or anybody?
Right.
I mean, shouldn't that be something that's taken out of, of a judgment call also?
That is, as well, in Appendix D. But that was part, that was... I'll try not to take up too much of your time, but that is in here with the multiple residential families, developments, that you would have two entrances. But if you've got, the way that it's, it depends on how the road is laid out, I have always looked at the road, and how many homes, and how many dead ends we've got to see, and how it would affect the roadway, because the code says that I can look at that as far as historical congestion, things that would cause a road hazard, hazard to life safety, then we can have them put in another entrance. So, that's what we've looked at historically.
Well, for the, I'm sorry. But for the same thing is, if we had a barricade to subject here at the front...
Absolutely.
We still can't get everybody out.
Absolutely.
So, I think you need to have multiple exits for...
Yes, sir.
What, no matter if, you know, even if...
And we have had problems where we've had to call people's work ourselves and say, "They're not lying, they can't get out of their house, they cannot get to work, this is what's happening." And we've had to do that, and school buses, you know, same thing, because school buses couldn't get in, if they did, they couldn't get out.
So, Deborah, do you have the authority to go back and retroactively require...
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. This is just going forward.
Okay.
You know, this is just like my subdivision, as you know.
Mm-hmm.
I think folks like these. I don't know when they started getting built with an entrance. We feel safer...
Right.
In some regard, that way. We've had cases where there's been a break-in, and you can call...
You're talking about the one entrance?
Yeah, yeah. So, in some regard, folks like that, because we've got kids playing in the streets, it's not a cut-through, you got one entrance, one exit, you know, have folks coming in, three or four different entrance or exits. Someone stole a kid, someone's broken into a house.
Right.
We know they've gotta go out through the front. So, that's a whole separate issue, I'm just saying.
Well, we have counteracted that by saying that on that second entrance, we've asked the developers to put a Knox box on it. It doesn't have to be public, but we would like, they can put a gate up, but the fire department has to have a key, such as a Knox box, to where they can get in and out, but the public cannot get in and out. And that is an option for them, so that people can, emergency services can move in and out, but we can have them put a gate with a Knox box up to where the general public can't go in and out.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to add a little bit to that topic here, too. The committee did talk about the multiple points of access, and personally, I think, even from a planning standpoint, in a lot of cases, it makes a lot of sense to have more than one way in. But if you look at this example, this development had, I believe, three locations where it fronted, 801. Perfect layout to meet this. But, and if you recall back to Yorkshire Farms, the developer was opposed to building that secondary access point to state standards. So, that was something that we worked through in a conditional use permit, and they, you know, added that second entrance. It was gravel. But we're also looking at example, and talking about another one, they had a lot of frontage, or relatively speaking. But what about Cameron Glen? That might be another one with 160 to 70 lots, be another great example, where two entrances would be good, but it also had maybe 400 feet of frontage. So, it's difficult when you write an ordinance, and you predetermine what someone's gonna have to do. And Ms. Horn didn't mention, but there's a remoteness clause in there, too, that tells you how far away those points of access have to be. You adopt that, and you got a real issue when you don't have a developer, that the land that they purchase has a lot of frontage. So, that was the reason why we chose not to do that. Personally, think that may be one of the most important things here. But I don't know what you do when you, there could be a lot of other situations, well, they can purchase an easement from someone, it doesn't have to be built to state specs, but just another way out. Same time, I felt like that was maybe a bit much to tackle with this being pretty significant in and of itself. So, wanted to share that. One other thing Commissioner Caskett mentioned with the streets that are under 150, it's very rare that you're gonna have a section of road that would be less than 150. Lot width, minimum is 70 feet, and if you're thinking developers want to use both sides of the street, I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, but it probably gonna be pretty rare. So, most, all of these cul-de-sacs would be the 96 feet. I think the primary discussion here may be the, the road width of 26 versus 20 in this layout.
If you would like to consider the two points, Appendix D says per unit or more houses. The regular fire code says just where I say, for an extra entrance.
We...
Appendix, part of Appendix D does say 30 or more lots would require a second entrance. The fire code says just where the authority having jurisdiction says you need one. So, if you wanted to go, we could absolutely do that, it just says 30 or more, unless they're sprinkled. So, it's 30 or more in Appendix D, the fire code says where the authority having jurisdiction says that you need one.
Now, it's like he's saying, if you make that rule, I mean, if you've got a shotgun subdivision, 300 feet wide, but, you know, it goes back...
And that's one reason that we allowed Yorkshire Farms to bring theirs in a little closer, just to use a little bit of common sense. As the authority having jurisdiction, thankfully, I'm able to do... As the authority having jurisdiction, thankfully, I'm able to do that when it because it would wouldn't make any sense for a second entrance to be in the middle of a curve on Mooresville Road at 5:00 in the afternoon.
Any other questions for our guests, our friends? All right, then, we do need to conduct a public hearing, and so I'll open the floor to a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak during the public hearing? Or if not, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we can discuss.
I just have one thing to say. Having been through a house fire, you understand how a bottleneck would just consume everything as you're trying to get the right equipment in the right place.
Are you wanting a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I am. So, I... I'd revisit the part, I think it was Jim asked about the DOT, because I think Aaron also had a question about, and maybe I was unconfused, if you go back over the part whether or not DOT would take over the streets if we were to follow these different rules. So, whoever wants to answer that.
You'll make an answer.
I'll try to recap what everybody said. As far as I understand, DOT wouldn't necessarily DOT reserves would reserve the right to make changes or abide by their own rules, but they haven't done so in the past, and it's not expected that they would resist any of the changes and not maintain any of the roads.
These won't go on record, say that.
Apparently not.
Okay.
Caskett, I'd like to... Commissioner Caskett, I'd like to help you on this answer. Through my experience with the developers I've dealt with, generally, the one of the first things they do is they meet with DOT and see what DOT is going to require so that once the road is put in, it will be maintained by DOT. So, this is not a deal where they just go in and build a road and say, okay, now you've got to take it over. I mean, they work in concert with each other to make sure that what they put down is going to be acceptable to DOT. So, I think the scenario that you're concerned about, or maybe even Commissioner Green, is usually not an issue.
Well, I mean, I know there's, oh, sorry. I know there's a lot of I've got a lot of calls about development, especially down in the southern part of the county where it was built, and then they didn't build it within standard, like, well, I'm not in development, my road's a right-ofway, because and this DOT won't take it over because the right-ofway is not allowed enough. But I don't want us to get to the, you know, requiring something that's going to automatically disqualify DOT from taking over, but if if everyone else is comfortable with that...
I mean, I go back to the same chart. Lincoln County, they adopted this in 2016. It says, "Local DOT did not want to maintain excess pavement."
And and that was the point that I was making is I think we need to hear from DOT about the excess that we've got over the standard, the standard road width that's required by DOT. I would like to be satisfied that the homeowners are not going to be stuck with an extra whatever number of feet that we require for them before we before we would pass this thing. I just would like to talk with the DOT. I'd also like to talk with some architects or developers or some folks from the other side of it to see just the gravity of what we're talking about here and how much, when Commissioner Pierce was talking about in one particular place, losing five lots, well, you know, five lots nowadays could be $100,000. And and that's what concerns me. It seems to me that we need a little bit, well, not a little bit, a lot more study as far as what impact we're really having on the developers and the homeowners in the in this whole thing.
Well, I think you know that you have been a good friend to us, and I hope you feel like this board is a friend of the fire, safety, and emergency workers, because we certainly have a deep place in our heart for what you guys do. I'm not there yet on this. That's not to say I won't be, I just have questions that I'd like to have answered so that we can know when we take a vote on this, what those answers are. And I've got a lot of questions. I think I I wanted to have this tonight just personally because I want I've not really had conversations with you all. I spoke with you briefly between Landis and China Grove at the parade this week, and we got a great email from you outlining what your position is. And, you know, Commissioner Pierce is right, we don't know about this stuff, but this this is a big one. And and we rely on you guys to provide us with information. There's just other information I'd like to get. So, I wouldn't vote no on this, but I'd like for us to table it for some amount of time to just to give us an opportunity to answer some questions and and to promise to you that we will bring it back and have a vote on it. It doesn't need to be a long time, but we are certainly coming out of Thanksgiving, going into Christmas, and beginning our new year. So, this is the beginning of December. I'd like to I'd like to make a motion that we table it until, let's see, get us out of the first of the year to the first meeting in February. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, that's my motion that we table this until the first meeting in February.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, just a footnote, Commissioner Caskett will be deployed at that period of time.
Will you run?
I may be I may be at some, I may be on active duty for a few weeks then, but I'm not I ain't got orders yet, but possibly.
Is this something that we could take up at our work session and have representative from DOT and a developer come in and speak to these issues?
It could be.
I think that's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
I'll be glad to provide a developer to come talk to you.
All right, and so we don't we set that date already, didn't we?
10th.
Okay. Okay. So, then that'd give us an opportunity to ask them, and then we could vote at our next meeting after that?
Right, which would be...
Okay. Is that okay?
16th or something, 17th.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We table this. We're going to bring in folks at our January 10 meeting, and then that'll give us opportunity to vote on this at the second meeting in January.
So, I support this, but I don't think really it goes far enough. So, I would still like us to look at the 96 for everything and the multiple port points of entrance. So, I don't know if when we have if we could get maybe some of that information from Lincoln County for us either before or at that meeting, or maybe it was provided and I just didn't see it, but, you know, since this is, I guess, is controversial, we need to go ahead and take all of it care of it at once instead of doing a little bit here and a little bit there. Let's just go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off and get it fixed right the first time, but...
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much for your time. All right, so item number four is on our agenda as bond order and resolution for the issuance of general obligation bonds. First thing that we want to do is we're going to have a we're going to have a public hearing for that, and so we need to set the rules for the public hearing. And so, the following, the length of comment for each speaker would be limited to three minutes to address the board, and comments should be restricted if the subject of the hearing is advertised. I make that in the form of a motion.
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, let's see, we will need a motion introducing the following bond order, the title of which is?
Mr. Commissioner, on this bond, the bond order authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the county of Rowan in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $45 million for the purpose of financing in part the acquisition, construction, installation, renovation, and equipping of educational facilities of Rowan Cabarrus Community College.
And that's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mike, Mike seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, we will need to introduce the following resolution, the title of which was read, and that's you've got that, Jim.
Sir, resolution providing for public hearing on bond order for $45 million, general obligation bonds, and publication of bond order and notice of hearing and other action.
And that's in the form of a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jay? Leslie, is that all we need on those two? Just had two motions.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anything else we need to do with that?
No, so the the second resolution that you just adopted, it sets the public hearing for the 16th.
Okay. All right. Nothing else, move on to the next item, Northeast Rowan County Water System Refund. Manager Church.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me... So, from this is the been the first year of of the North Rowan County Water System, and we met with the the customers that live out there, that are that live in the area and they're customers of the system approximately a year ago, and then we met with them again recently to discuss the the water system, where we had projected at one time what our revenue would be and what our expenses would be. If you exclude the $100,000 of a one-time capital contribution from Duke Energy, the total revenue from September 18 to June 2019 was $119,548. During the same time period, the expenditures were $80,018. As of June, the total approximate number of customers was 155. We did have a depreciation expense of $35,841, which, if you look at that, would increase the total operating expense to $115,860. Based on the above information and conversations I've had, the board may consider refunding to each customer approximately $150 per customer for the year, and it would just be a one-time refund, and it would not necessarily mean there'd be a refund the year before. In discussions with the customers on the Northeast Rowan County Water System, there there was there has been some concern about the the cost of water, and we've had lots of discussions about that. And so, with that, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So, a year ago, when we introduced the water system, we had to come up with a price. We had to publish our price. And not having experience in selling water, we had to build a pricing model based on assumptions. And so, during that time, there were some folks in that area who were told that the county was trying to make a profit on this, and we assured them that we were not, that we were using a lot of assumptions. That was true, but after one year, those assumptions would turn into history, and we would have a history of one year's worth of of records and be able to determine what the actual, not not just a model, but we would have experience then. And after a full year, like the manager said, we did have the the income and expense were different than what the model had predicted, and so, holding true to our word to those that we had given those in the north area, we're going to refund part of that money. Some of it is staying in capital funds for repairs, which we will have repair costs, but we're making allowance for that, but had come up with an idea of refunding them $150 each, those who are who are current customers. And so, that's where all of this has come from, and we'll revisit this again possibly next year. So, that's where this has come from.
Now, I'll ask Leslie, in our our conversation last week, this refund will also be calculated in the depreciation? Is that correct? Or it will be calculated next year somehow?
Well, it will show as a cash outlay as some type of expenditure, probably for fiscal year 2020. And then, the depreciation expense, which was $35,841 this year, in the in the first year of depreciation, the water lines are being depreciated over 40 years, and we use a half-year convention. So, in the first year, which 2019 was, you you take the value, the total cost, divided by 40, and then divide that by two, so that in your first year and in your 40th year, or 41st year, actually, it's half-year. So, next year, it will be, just so you know, roughly $72,000 in depreciation, so you'll know.
So, are we adjusting the water rate to compensate for this 150 for next year?
Don't believe we have.
That...
And I think we had that conversation with them. We met again with them, was it last month? And they they have all been paid for that amount. So, Duke Energy, as you know, paid for $25 worth of their water cost. Duke Energy asked us what would our projected monthly cost be. We told them that, and they so they've been paid by Duke Energy for 25 years' worth of water. Now, we're actually charging them less than what we originally thought. So, the the thought was to keep it at the same cost for this year, and instead of the the fund not having sufficient revenues next year, if something happened, we would just address this next year.
Mr. Chairman, could could we add as an item on our retreat, a long-term goal of our water system?
I think that'd be a great idea.
It seems to me that whatever number of houses we have out there is act, quite frankly, more trouble than it's worth to the county. And I'd like for us just to discuss what what we might plan on doing, and if if you commissioners have a plan of extending water lines somewhere in the future, that's that's fine, but I'd just like to discuss it.
All right. Make a note of that. Okay. So, the refunds there are going to go to the person that pays the bill and not the homeowner necessarily, if it's rental property. I guess some of the issues where some of the renters said that the money went to the property owner, and my rate's still high, I didn't get anything for that. So, these refunds will go to whoever pays the bill.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Well, that, that needs to be stipulated. It, I mean, if, if there's going to be a motion that it, that it goes to the water customer, not the property owner.
All right, so then, um, I'll make a motion that we refund a hundred and fifty dollars to the account owner this one time.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see if I can pull this show back up here. Yeah, I thought that'd be the case. How do I get this on?
Go to slideshow, on the very top, very top, nope, slideshow at the very top.
Over here, there we go. There we go, all right, thank you. So, um, going back to a couple months ago, where we had the open house at the, at the project site, uh, we rolled out two options, two ideas, of what the exterior of the new ag center would look like, and one was more of a modern, sort of retro-style look, and the other one was what we deemed the more of the craftsman architectural style, and since then, we've gotten pretty overwhelming, um, uh, feedback that preference would be the more craftsman style, and so, we've been working on that direction, and so, what I'll do is, um, take you through where we're at today, it's just a, sort of a progress report, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have. Well, this is, this is the look that we rolled out at the open house, um, and you can see it's got a lot of detailing, um, pretty much the entire facade of the existing bulk has been recovered with, uh, new materials and new architectural features. Since then, uh, we began, as we do, get into our, our refinements of the project, starting to really focus in on what our actual budget is, and, uh, internally, we believe that this still probably would be stretching the budget quite a bit. So, the next idea, and this is just another view of that original scheme, uh, again, with multiple vertical piers that took place, uh, a real heavy, uh, refinement of that corner, since that's probably your most visible corner, um, readdressing the entrances of the bulk on both sides, and then a modest, um, overhang for, uh, pedestrian walk-up, and a modest canopy over here for outdoor events. Uh, again, this was the original scheme, since then, we've, we've developed a concept C, based on that scheme, and the refinements, refinements that we made, again, due to some feedback that we received, was to create a little better canopy situation on the front, where we could create a circular drop-off point for people to drop off in inclement weather, um, and also to extend the covered outdoor area a little more than what we had originally. Well, so in doing that, we got, okay, this is starting to add money, not refine it back to where we need to be, so we started looking at the skin, excuse me, started looking at the skin of the building a little more, and noticed that the brick elements of the existing bulk is, is in really good shape, uh, relatively speaking, so we began to, to decide, rather than cover the whole skin of the building, let's use as much of it as we can that makes sense, and, uh, create other ways to create some details and some delineations of that large box. So, what you're seeing here is an area where this area right here, and, and an equal area on the other side of the building, that's the original brick facade, so what we're doing is putting some decorative light fixtures on it that could broadcast light at night, both up and down, and then, uh, providing some plantings to create that vertical relief into a very large horizontal building. Still wanted to create new entrances, uh, to identify the entrances of the building on both sides, and still wanted to do something with this corner, since it's very visible, but instead of a whole, um, new superstructure of covered trellises and so forth that we had in the original scheme, and I can go back, so you can, I think I can go back, how would I go back? Let's see, yeah, that, you can see how this is much more articulated in superstructure than the current scheme that we have, which is more simplified. The other thing we did is reduce the amount of extra materials that we're using, the previous scheme had this whole wall out of a new stone veneer, which all of you should probably understand, that's very expensive, we don't believe that's going to be in the budget, so we did away with that, kept the brick, but we're still using a little bit of stone to articulate these corners and a few features, uh, over here at the entrances. The reason why stone is desirable, because it's a very craftsman-style material for that architectural style, and it also creates a, a, a smaller unit that's more pleasing to a pedestrian scale, um, so those, those things are very important. Some of the, okay, is that it? Okay, so, to talk about some of the other materials we're using, now this is saying a pre-finished aluminum cladding and, uh, coping at the top, something to give a little bit heavier cap at the top, so it doesn't look like just a very thin line coping at the top, again, it's an effort to bring the scale of that wall down a little bit.
Bob, I think there's some more, I just think there's accident, an accidental blank page.
Oh, was there a, a blank page?
I'm not sure.
Nope.
No, sorry.
That's all right, I mean, this pretty much illustrates pretty well where we're at. So, just in terms of the materials, we're, we're trying to, um, reduce the amount of extra materials we use, and trying to make good use of what's already there. This also identifies some, uh, metal paneling here, but we're so early in our design process, that's really kind of up for debate, I, I would also like to suggest that maybe we'll use more of a cementitious, uh, siding-type panel, uh, if you're familiar with the term Hardy, uh, that's one brand, but they make a commercial brand for Hardy as well, and it's very durable, uh, very long-lasting, and very, uh, not, maintenance-friendly, um, so that might be another thing that we'd do in lieu of aluminum cladding, which is very expensive as well, um, you can get a very nice look, and to me, uh, ship-lap siding or even, um, board and batten siding is more in keeping with the craftsman style than aluminum, uh, panels, so. This represents about twenty-five percent through the schematic process at this point, um, it's, it's, it's very early in the process, but we wanted to, uh, bring this to you to give you an idea of where we're at right now, uh, answer any questions you have, and give us some sense if you think that we're in, going in the right direction. Uh, once we get to about seventy-five percent of schematic design phase, we're going to be sending this out to a professional, um, estimator, so we can begin to put real dollars, but, but we believe internally, just from our own experience and what the market's doing right now, that we're probably on the right track from a budget standpoint, so with that, I'll open up to any questions you may have.
Is the, um, size of the letters for the signed West End Plaza, is that the same as the first concept?
It, it, it may be smaller, but that, that is still open for debate, I mean, if we need to be larger, I mean, I don't think a smaller, uh, font letter will be that much of a savings than what you see there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think it needs to be a little more bold.
Sure.
And kind of what I, um, the direction that, that Bob needs is, is whether to, to go with concept B or C.
B, B, C, yeah, yeah, this, this direction, basically, yeah.
Is this something we're voting on, or do we just need to tell you that, do we need to vote on this?
You don't, you don't have to vote on it, I just, it's, um, the, the design that he brought a couple of weeks ago, um, had changed a little bit from B, and it's supposed to be a little bit less expensive.
Yes.
And also, just want to make sure that, that we are talking about concept B, which is now C, and that, you know, initially, there was a concept A, which was real modern, but the board never said, "Go with B."
Gotcha.
I mean, you know, I, I think the large portion of the surveys that came back, and everyone said they liked B better, but just wanted to get some direction from the board, official direction, that you, that you, that B is the choice, and now that you've seen C, whether or not you like B or C better.
If we make a choice tonight, can we request that the Salisbury Post quit using A?
Yeah, and that's another good point, this one's never been, I don't know if it's been in the paper, B.
I think at one time, there was an image of this, the, yeah, that, yeah, I think there was at one time, an image of that.
Every time we, every, every time they talk about it, they use, um, the original.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I've gotten calls, "We thought you were going to do something different, we hate that one," so.
Well, and I should say, because we are only twenty-five percent into the process, a lot of the ideas that we're throwing out with this refinement, we could circle back, it's not too late to circle back to that other option, if you like, ended up liking that better, but, um, this is what we had heard from an overwhelming standpoint, that this was the direction we should be going in.
So, Bob, what's approximately the cost difference between B and C?
Boy, that, you're, you're asking for a real deep-down gut feeling, so.
You know, is it, is C closer to what, we're talking about eighteen million?
Well.
How much?
Well, I, I think what he's saying is, to keep us in our budget, we need to make these changes.
Yeah.
I understand, I understand, but what is, what is the amount that we're, we're thinking for?
I don't know, I don't know the to, I don't know the split between the interior
Yes.
and exterior.
Yeah, so I will tell you the direction that I'm working from, I, I did bring this, these are the numbers that I have, was that the base scope of the project, which was the, all the interior, including the, uh, meeting hall and the ag center retrofit, is about ten point six, now, that is an estimate that we came up with based, again, on our gut, our experience, eh, with what we're seeing in the market. The, uh, amount of the, um, pardon me, that's, that, that ten point six, let's see, that is all of the ag center, uh, retrofits, then an extra three million for the, um, entry fe, features, some of these entry features that you see on here, and, um, all the exterior treatments, so three million would be what you're looking at today.
Okay.
And then, uh, another one point six for all the exterior features that go around the bulk.
So, just going back and looking at, at B one more time, um.
Which is there.
How much do we save from B to C?
Right now, if I had to make a wild guess, uh, I would say you're probably saving in the neighborhood of six to seven fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. To get it closer to that three million.
So, when we ultimately get the thing that we're going to vote on, are, is it going to be broken down, um, with the outside, is it going to be, you know, uh, it's this price, this is it, or is it, you know, if you want to spend, uh, you know, part of this, is how much it would be if you want all these options, is it going to be broken down, or is it just going to be one big chunk for the outside?
One big chunk right now, uh, that's not to say we can't include some alternates into the bid documents that have different small elements of the exterior design broken out to where you can choose a menu of things, yeah, we're going to take that one, no, we're not going to take that one, so, uh, we, 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 in, in the contract, we basically classified this whole project into four alternates, one is really the base, and then three alternates, so to use the word alternate, I don't want to confuse you, but the, the base was the interior, all the interior work, alternate one is what you're looking at tonight, alternate two was all the site work around the bulk, and alternate three was the combination of extending this treatment from the bulk all the way to J.C. Penney, and the exterior site work corresponding to that, so those are the, those are the three phases right now, the way we're working with, now, within any one of these phases, we can break out, you know, different small options, you like, you know, you want to use stone, it'd be this much more, if you want to just use, um, more brick or whatever, it might be this, we could break those into separate alternates, we can do that. It doesn't have to be one big chunk, and that's it.
Right, and, and the feedback that I had gotten, and probably some other commissioners about what they've heard, um, almost everyone that I talked to was fine with the inside, the outside was where the heartburn was, how much are we going to spend on cosmetic-type things?
Right.
And so, I, you know, I personally would like, I guess, to be able to option it down some, if we get there and we think it's, you know, too high.
Which is kind of the direction we're headed to.
So I guess what we need to tell him tonight is just to head down the path of B or C, C is cheaper, um, I'm, I'm for C. What do you think? C, 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 okay.
And, and there'll be more refinements from this point, like I said, we're only twenty-five percent into the schematic phase, and we'll be more than happy to come back, present further refinements as we go, no problem. At one point, we want to also present you with a, an estimate, what we're getting from a professional estimator, and how it's looking, and at that point, we can make some decisions, if we're way under your budget, then you may want to go back to the original, it won't be too late, if we're over, we'll have to do some more refinements, so that's part of the process that we want to go through.
All right.
All right?
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, drive safely back.
Thank you.
You got a new interstate right on now, don't you?
Yeah, it's, it's nice and clean now.
All right, uh, item seven, budget amendments, motion.
I'm not six B, Quay.
Six, man, I just blew right past them, six A and six B, I got excited, saw a light at the end of the tunnel.
You end up in Charleston.
All right, uh, the next item is, uh, grant administration, uh, Manager Church.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is, um, this is a resolution, um, authorizing the county manager to select, negotiate, and sign a contract with a grant administrator, um, so what, what that means is, this, the, the county received a, a one-point-five-million-dollar community development block grant for infrastructure for the Chulie project, and that's to do the sewer line, um, up there, uh, so, wi, within that one-point-five million, we have to meet all kinds of guidelines and regulations, and from the beginning of the project to way past the project, you know, we have to determine the, uh, just several things we have to do, um, one of the things in this, in, in the grant, uh, there should be a certain amount of money we can use for administration, um, but normally, this is something we would have, um, to, to do, and we're, in, in order to speed this up, we did the RFP, um, or RFQ, and, and two came back, and we would like to have three, so we reissued it Wednesday for another ten days, so, so the board doesn't have to come back and have a special meeting next week, when hopefully, they, they come back in, um, I talked to, um, the folks at the state, and they said y'all could approve this, so when they come back in next week, you know, I, I will be able to, um, select the grant administrator, um, negotiate a contract with the administrator, and sign it, and sign the contract with the administrator, and. And basically, they will keep up with the project and make sure we're in compliance and, and doing everything we should do. So, we, we had hoped to, to have the actual contract here today, but we don't. We went, we went back out for bid, well, we talked about going back out for bid Wednesday, I think it was not in the paper, actually, Friday. So, and, and even that process, we have to make sure we're doing it right to stay in compliance. So, that's all this is, is just giving me authority to select and sign a contract with the grant administrator.
Questions for Aaron. This is time-sensitive, we've got to get sewer under the interstate and turned on before Chewy opens, and so, it's been a big issue, yeah. And getting sewer on the east side of 85 there at exit 81 will be a big deal also, but this is a million and a half dollar grant, it's a CDBG grant, it is highly technical, and if we do something wrong, we lose the whole grant. And it's a million and a half dollars that we don't want to pay out on this. So, professional grant writer is something that would be very valuable to us in this instance.
Will the writer be paid out of this million and a half, or is it come out of economic development funds?
This, this should be, there, Scott, you, you may have to help me here. Is there, is there money in addition to the 1.5 that can go towards administering the grant?
My understanding with the budget that was submitted is the grant administrator fee of $25,000 is included in the 1.5 million budget.
So, it's a part of the 1.5?
Part of the budget, yes, that's my understanding, yeah.
So, it's not 1.5 million and 25,000 dollars?
No, sir.
It's 1, 1.5 can go towards the project, and of that 1.5, 25,000 has to go towards grant administration.
Correct.
So, if it doesn't go towards grant administration, it can't go towards the infrastructure.
That's my understanding is.
So, it's, it's, it's going to be the, basically, if, if that's the case, then it would be the state or the community development block grants money paying for this, to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, as the county manager said, it's federal dollars that the state administers, so we do want to make sure we get it right.
Now, there's a possibility they could come in above that, and then we would have to, you know, we could, we could find money to pay for that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve that?
No move.
Resolution? Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. Now, we've got six B, commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, we have been talking for some time about trying to provide a park in the Woodleaf community, if and when we could get a hold of the land from the Board of Education. And we have gone to McAdams and asked them to draw up a proposal for us, for the park, and what it could look like, and just some ideas that we can bring to you later on. But obviously, we need the approval of each of the commissioners here, or the majority to get this done, and that's why I brought this proposal to you tonight, let you look at it. Hopefully, you've had a chance to, to look at it. The contract is about $16,000, and you can see and hear the things that they will be bringing to us. And if this was approved, we would ask that this would be exempt from the Mini Brooks Act, because it's under $50,000,000, and would allow the county manager to handle these funds for, for this.
All right, so do you have a motion you'd like to give us?
That, that is the motion that I would like to give.
Second.
All right, be a good thing. Yeah? All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions for Jim? All right, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Green, for working on that. No, it's been a big issue. All right, item seven, budget amendments, motion to approve budget amendments.
No move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have some board appointments we'd like to bring. Town of Granite Quarry Planning Board recommends the appointment of Jared Mathis to serve as an ETJ alternate on the planning board. Motion in a second.
No move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Board of Health, Jennifer Jones applied for reappointment for a three-year term. Motion in a second.
No move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Local Emergency Planning Committee voted to recommend the appointment of Tony "Jason" TJ Brown for a vacant state and local seat on the LEPC. No limits to the term for this committee, motion in a second, please.
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pete Bogel, Jack Fisher, and Bradley Godwin applied for reappointment for the three-year terms on the Rowan County Planning Board, expires December 31st, 2022. Motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rowan Public Library, Dr. Reginald Brown applied for reappointment for a three-year term, motion in a second.
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Judy Barnhart and Wayne Taylor employed, applied for reappointment of the South Salisbury Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners. However, both have served two, two terms. Fire chief and, the, Fire Chief Jason Burnett requested a waiver of the term limits established in the resolution adopted by our board, which limits them to two terms. If the term limits are waived, the reappointment of Mrs. Barnhart and Mr. Taylor will be for two years. Keith Bowles applied to fill the third seat, and if appointed, that term would expire December 31st. So, do we have a motion to approve Keith Bowles?
No move.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to waive the term limits for Judy Bernhardt and Wayne Taylor? In a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Judy Bernhardt and Wayne Taylor.
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Therapeutic Recreation Board, Peggy Harris resigned from this board on November 17th. Were asked to accept her resignation, motion to, to approve that.
No move.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Renita Ritchie applied to fill the remainder of Ms. Harris's term, that'll expire November 30th, 2020. Motion to approve that.
No move.
In a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Rowan County, we have 45 vacancies on various county boards. Would implore you to get involved in your community, and ask you to check out our website, Rowan County website, go to the boards, and look and see what interests you, and we would gladly put you to work.
Free.
For free, yeah, put you to work for free, we won't, we won't charge you a dime. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.